Did you know that you have flag stamps here at the facility?
Cool, well, maybe you could get it and put it in the corner here. I just have a flag up.
Are they in the closet next door?
When do you throw them away? You throw them away?
I did not.
Old babies.
I know where the base is. The bowl goes in. I don't know where the bowl is. I know where the base is. We're from the boy's camp still.
So, where do you feel take the horse for next meeting? Okay, thanks. Is there any public input on anything that's not on the agenda?
Well, I didn't look on the agenda. Is the farmer's market on the agenda? Okay, then I get some public input.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, I contacted a few people. There's some question as to how to charge. All things are getting going. There's a lot of enthusiasm. I think I can get quite a few people, including several locals involved. I'm hoping for a May start time. Getting everything together for you guys. I'm going to be asking one of the other markets for a contract, so I can see how they sign up their contracts. Haven't done that yet. And then, I've just been collecting interest in names and talking to people. Turns out, some of them collect thirty dollars, some of them charge a percentage. Some of them think that until you prove yourself as a location, you should do deals to make it...
Tacky.
Yeah, to get things going. And so, I'm going to put all that into your little brains and say, chew on that. And then, next month, I'm going to ask you for specifics about what you think we need to do for the farmer's market. And I will have a list of people and a copy of the contract to bring you and the list of interested. One of the people was the cafe. They'd like to do tamale's. There's some flower people. There's several people. So, I'm thinking, if people are not lying to me straight face, I will have good participation. But I don't know how to charge, so...
I think you better entice them then. Have a fee and then until we get busy, maybe we waive it.
Can I just throw one thing out? We don't really discuss these things in the meeting. Can you look into, like, turn around? Room for cars to come in, park, turn around and get back out without being in the pedestrian walkway?
I will, I'll talk, John Gannaway and I are chatting about a number of issues. And I'll see what he'll...
Is this at the school side or the children's center side?
Children's center.
Yeah.
In the round. We're already setting up for a horse trailer turnaround there. Parking could be interesting. So, I agree with you. It is an issue. So, I will try to have that drawn out for you when I come back. But I did want you to know, I'm not sitting on my fingers.
What about the using the school and putting the people on the grass and letting the whole parking be for parking?
I would love to do that if we can get Gannaway to go along with it.
Do you want us to apply any friendly pressure? Let us know.
I will. The first thing I think I'll do is low key, because sometimes you ruffle feathers and everybody's got something to say about it. So, I noticed that happened with the evacuation setup. All of a sudden, what was drawn out and approved by the board supervisor member is now getting some, looks like a pile of bloody clay. So, we're working on that. Go ahead.
What if we start it at the children's center? And then, if we need to move, then we have a need and then we take that to OCPs.
I like that. And I think Spitzer would probably lean on the appropriate people if we are successful. And it's just... I will beware the Ides of March kind of thing for people defending their territories.
With the library there, it seems like it's pretty public use for us, so...
Sometimes they're funny about where things go. We had to fight for the horse evac center. They said, "Well, not at the children's center open." We're going, "Are you nuts?" Actually, that's not quite what I said, but you get the idea. So...
That's why we don't put you out there first to talk to me.
That's usually a good idea. So, anyway, there's my report. And I hope it goes a long way to helping say the thing that I consider one of our precious things in the county.
Thank you. Any other public stuff that's not on the agenda? All right, so, we have consent calendar. We have director's compensation. We have district bills totaling thirty-six, forty-nine, ninety. Director's is two hundred for one meeting. Utility bills. Eleven, forty-two, eighty-one. And we have the minutes from last month. Is everybody okay with the, anything that we need to pull and talk about individually?
The only thing I had comment on, I, I, I don't know if it's in a minute. Can I mention if you have a part of the vote?
Do I abstain?
Yes.
I don't have that in a minute.
Well, Liz remembers it. I remember it. I remember it.
Would a director make a motion to vote and then abstain? I don't know.
I can make it.
Or do you? You can make a motion for a vote, but then abstain from vote?
I'm asking the board to vote on an issue, but I'm abstaining because I'm asking the board.
Now, I might be...
With that correction, I would...
Isn't it in the, isn't it? The video cut off right before the final vote. I didn't go switch the...
This was the meeting before.
Two meetings ago, the special meeting.
I saw it in somewhere.
Which was the last month's meeting.
Would have been minutes in last month's meeting. From the special meeting before the March 7th. Or February 7th.
Okay, we all okay with the minutes for this meeting, which is February twenty-fifth. And are we all okay with the bills as presented? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Make a motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I bet everybody's...
Director Spencer?
Yeah.
Yep, aye.
Hi. Please.
Yes, aye.
Yes. Can you make it out? I asked Megan to take me off the page for it, so that that money can be used in the account paid for hygienics. But I think this might have been before. She might have printed that out before. This is the last meeting. So, it should be sixty dollars plus.
Megan said she could just... Children's Center. Everybody, if you haven't met her, Laurie, stand up. This is Laurie Briggs. She's the new director.
I guess I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the new director. I've been in childcare for twenty-five years. And I'm very excited for the opportunity to take the children's center to a whole new level. Is there anything specific you need me to share? I mean, just talk about your plan and... Yeah, right, well, I've been there twelve days. And in the past twelve days, we've done a lot of cleaning and eliminating of old stuff and just going through the computer system and just acclimating myself, everything. We are jumping into our new programs for the summer camp, which is going to hopefully be the best summer camp ever.
Oh, damn it, honey.
So, I understand that there's a lot of people in the community that have resources that can help us on certain things that we want to do. So, I may be reaching out to people here and there, especially you. So, yeah.
How about new kids?
We have three new kids. But one is a full-time student, one is a part-time student, and one is kind of a, kind of a both, part-time, full-time, just depending on what week it is. So, we're already doing better there. And I just talked to someone at the cafe who is interested in sending their child. So, that was promising as well.
What's your email address? Anyone who sent you the report from the right time?
It's silveradochildrencenter@gmail.
I have a question on the new kids. Of course, we're always excited about that. Was there a source for the new kids? Is there some reason why they showed up?
One was a child who had already been there and left for a while. One was a child who, James hadn't been there before, had he?
Yeah, he actually was referred by Melissa Jacobs, Jack Jacobs' mom. He's Jack, and his mom is friends.
He's not coming back, I don't think, until maybe spring.
Okay, well, spring's right around the corner.
The mom said on a per-DM basis, they wanted to be involved in that. Her son will be a great time there.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're planning an open house on, hopefully, April twenty-sixth. If we can get the building all ready and the facility all cleaned up, even more than we already have. And then, we want to reintroduce it to the community and, yes.
I would like to caution you. I know you're really important, but we've got a pet clinic and a library thing coming up.
Okay.
And I think if you overlook, I want you to be important. I want you to say my name. There's the pet clinic and then the library swap meet. So, just think about those when you're scheduling.
Okay, and those take place at the site?
April, no, the community center here.
Okay.
But they're time-consuming. And when you have people in the community that are balancing kids and jobs and everything else, I don't want, I want you to be...
Wow.
Not a...
Oh, okay, later. Okay.
Are they on the same day?
The pet clinic and the, no. May fourth is the swap meet and the pet clinic, I think, is April something.
I think it's April.
It's like boom, boom. So, you would be boom, boom, boom.
Okay.
There's other books and they can have the chili.
Yeah, you know, the sooner we can have the open house, obviously, the better, because we want people to register for the summer program. And a lot of people are already registering their kids, but I would keep that early. Okay.
And get flyers, I'm sorry, pulled your copy.
That's okay.
Get flyers at the swap meet.
Swap meet, okay. Definitely, thank you. Okay. So, yeah, anymore?
Is there an approximate dollar amount that those three kids will be bringing in?
I did the approximate. We should be bringing in every month with all the kids that we have.
Oh, I meant the three new, is there a...
Yeah, that would be good. I would like to hear that.
Uh, that number would be forty-five sixty-three.
For all kids or just the...
That's the total for, no, for everyone that's enrolled right now. We should be bringing in approximately forty-five hundred dollars a month.
Including the new kid?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't had them in a full tuition cycle yet, so, yeah.
But how much extra did they bring in to...
Um, one of them is five... Five thirty-five a month. And the other two are about one oh eight a month. And the other one, well, J.C., I'm not sure. He's about seventy-five and then he's doing, they're doing drop-in, so... Oh, sorry.
Okay. So, yeah, so seven hundred or so. So, that'll bring us up above and maybe five thousand in income.
No, that's...
But this didn't include them for a whole month yet.
Didn't include them?
No, that's pro-rated.
Pro-rated.
Oh, good.
So, it'll be higher, closer to five-eight. A few more kids, that's all we ask.
You want to tell them about your horse program?
Well, we just started talking about it. Kelly and I are going to put together a horsemanship program for the summer. So, we, and we're hoping to get some of your, you know...
There's somebody in the canyon who's caught for a lot of years. And I've got some people in the canyon who are willing to volunteer some very gentle horses.
Awesome. Awesome. What is the main thing we're looking for, so, for though? Stalls?
Yeah, right now, what we were anticipating was to start up, bringing hopefully four horses in. We're looking at a minimum of sixteen kids, sixteen campers for the week. So, we're thinking four horses per, or four kids per horse. And if we get up, if we have more than sixteen, you know, I don't think it should be too hard to pull in two more horses.
But it's about accommodating the horses.
So, at this point, because we don't have any stalls set up, we would need volunteers that are willing to not only let us use their horses, but also trailer them in. We are looking at potentially finding some stalls that could potentially be donated to us. And if anybody else knows of anybody that is able to donate some pipe stalls for us for that temporary, temporary, one week at a time horse program.
Or forever.
Or forever. There you go. But, you know, we're hoping that this is kind of a huge kickstart for us, because out of the singular horse program, we've been discussing multiple projects that can be involved with the horses being brought in. And we're really excited about it.
Yeah. There's not a lot of programs like that in Orange County. I think it'll be a good job for people.
Advertising now is important.
Yes, yes. You'll be seeing some changes in the front of the center, because we're working on our curb appeal. So, over the next few weeks, we're going to be making some changes. And we do want some more tires, if anyone has.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not kidding.
There's some weird ideas.
Incredible ideas planned for all those tires, so...
Laurie?
I do have one final thing. Did you look at the website? Has the website been updated?
Yes, Shay and I have, she's working on the website. And it is hopefully going to be, I'm hoping it'll be published by the first of April.
We're waiting, I need, we have to check some old children's documentation where the parents check that they could be in web releases and photo releases before we make it live.
Oh, okay.
It's a whole new look.
Last time I looked at it, it was not...
Yeah, it's a whole new look.
It's different. It's beautiful.
It's ready to go right now.
Yeah.
Just put black bars over it.
It's ready, no, it's ready to go right now.
Okay, you can use Katie. Oh, yeah, so, we're on Yelp, too. So, go ahead and say something nice on Yelp.
We got yours. That was awesome.
Okay.
Laurie?
Yeah.
I have a question on the horse camp. Are you envisioning these horse stalls in the backyard? Like, sectioning off a section of the backyard?
I was thinking, I don't know.
We actually were hoping to utilize the grass area. And if the horse stalls are permanent, we were thinking it would really go nicely in hand with the emergency evacuation, because the horses, the horses may not stay at the site permanently. But if we were able, if you were able to get the round pin there, have some sort of an isolation which would be available. And I think that would be nice with the community as well to have that.
We could take that off-line.
You know, Patty, if we could do that, you know, since that's going to be kind of the new neighborhood center, it wouldn't be bad to have four or five stalls there. So, if people ride in, they can leave their horse for a while while they're at the library.
I am working with, and hitting some resistance about community use of the evac center. So, we're working with that. I'm working through bureaucracy and I do that so well. And to make that a, utilize a, a, a community asset, I'll take this offline with you. There's some sensitive stuff about it. And then, you can ask me whatever questions.
Well, the children's center has basically kind of somewhat say over the property kind of-ish, you know?
The driveway area.
We beg, yeah.
Okay.
We beg and they give.
Well, plus, the evac center's down on the school property. There's been some nudge back about the width. I'm asking for seventy feet from the edge of the fence.
Especially if you need to ask for the amount of horses there.
Yeah, so, because Majeska may be joining us. Majeska probably will be joining us, because their emergency center is not as safe as ours.
So, everybody, I'm sure, has been reading their emails and stuff. And we talked about the survey. They sent out and emailed everybody and said, "Look, there's a big typo. We're going to beat the guy severely." Fill in your words, you know, strongly agree, disagree, strongly, no, no opinion. So, I think we're all smart enough to deal with that, but we will beat the guy soundly, surely.
I did have a conversation with George, just to ask him his opinion, because he, you know, he does do surveys for a living. And I wanted to see what his opinion was. And he said that, he said he didn't think that it would matter, because if people used the, the, the scale that was there, even without the strongly agree, disagree, that we would probably get a sense for the person. The other thing he said was that he was thinking that people would probably write in. So, he would, but he wanted to take a look and think about it. And he would let us know. We did talk about it.
Is still planned to be?
Well, there are a lot of, like, redundancy of A, B, C, D, and then, you know... Will they do that on purpose?
Why? Couldn't have been offered.
Because I think you're asking the same question in a different manner.
Oh, is it saving?
No, shrink tester like that.
No.
We've seen it, is it issues like that? Yeah, Patty.
Okay, so, I remember strenuously saying several times, "I would like to have the community review it before you send it out." I have not personally read it. But a lot of my friends have said, "Have you seen that stupid survey?" And I said, "No, I haven't." So, I will let you know. Your feedback is making you look bad. Number two, I asked you, I begged you, I pleaded, and now I'm bitching at you. You should have brought it to the community. That was wrong. That was flat wrong. We asked you to bring it to the community and you just went ahead. You have the right to do it. That doesn't mean it was right. So, I am strongly voicing my displeasure at not having a review point for the community before you sent the damn thing out.
Or just have someone read it.
That was, I'm done, sorry.
When will the results of the survey be complete, number one? How big is the group being surveyed? In other words, does it go into Portola Hills or what area is covered? And how will it be displayed, the results of it? Do you have some... I'll answer that. The survey was done for the nine-two-six-seven-six zip code, which included two parts, included all the box holders and included all the home deliveries. So, people that are in Majeska or in that area. So, it was just the nine-two-six-seven-six.
What's the number on that? How many, what's the count?
I believe there was about nine hundred. Nine hundred box holders and home delivery. Each one got one survey. The way the plan is, according to Carson Bucking, they did a, I think it's fifteen days or ten days, they asked, did everybody respond? And of course, they're going to wait another five days after that to make sure all the mail comes in. And then, from that point on, they're going to immediately tabulate. I would think it would take them a few days to tabulate. So, we should within, within three weeks or so, have the tabulation of the response to that survey. That's gone.
So, what about people like, Tom, I have the same address, but we have interest in the different opinions.
Well, there was, there was no way to go household to household and count heads. Instead, we've got three people in this household and two people in that one and one in this. The way the survey was done was just done as a per-box. But that's the only way it could possibly be done, other than go door to door and talk to everybody individually and find out how many people were in that house.
So, if I scanned it and nailed it in?
It would be incorrect. It says you could only have one permanent address.
But you could put comments on it and they would be counted. Right, it is.
So, my understanding, the last time I looked at the census, I think that there was somewhere between two and three thousand individuals that lived in the nine-two-six-seven-six area.
I'm sorry, what?
Somewhere between two and three thousand. So, you're getting less than, assuming that maybe a third of those are children, it would be...
Oh, you're talking about population?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, the population in that zip code is nineteen-hundred-and-fifty. That includes children, teenagers, and so forth. The post office was the one that provided the number for the mailing addresses.
The number of mailing addresses?
Yes.
This is actually kind of an interesting, not more number than I thought. If we were going to actually do direct mail and some of our stuff, it might not be as expensive as we thought it would be. You know, instead of using the same, there's only nine hundred. We'll have to think about that down the road.
When are you going to discuss my freedom of information?
Well, I was going to do it earlier and I forgot, so now we're going to do it next.
And also, did you do roll call?
You didn't, and we'll do that next.
Sorry, I came late, but did you guys talk about the survey the whole time now?
Yeah.
Okay, can I? No?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I don't have it in front of me, but do you have it in front of you, somebody? Can I just, like, for me, to answer my question with my family, it would be, um, number one, what it says. What is your experience with the school? And A says, "I have children planned to attend," so I would check that with Anna. And then, I would check C. It says, "I have children that plan to attend." That's her. And it says, "C, question number six." Turn over question number six. What does that have to do, why don't you see that question?
Okay, the reason why...
It has nothing to do with children.
Okay, I'll answer that for you. If you have children that are planning to attend, question number six asks you to fill out your name, address, and contact information. The purpose of that is, if you have children that you're planning, are planning to attend at school, we would like to know about you and we'd like to be able to contact you. That's why question six exists. It also exists for donations. And it also exists for people donating their time and money. So, if someone says, "Yeah, I'm interested. I want to know more about the school." We don't know who they are unless they fill out that form. But the survey is anonymous, so somebody could possibly fill out the survey and not put their name in there.
Okay. Okay, well, I see the notes here. I guess you talked about it, that the A, B, C, D is the same.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, no, that was one of the points. Okay.
Okay, roll call. Obviously, the people that signed in are here. Ron is back in town, but had an emergency, something he works on airplanes and the plane is grounded and he picks it, so...
It's not the migration thing.
The other thing is Linda and I talked a little bit about her free to vote, her public records request last month. And you want me to paraphrase what I think we talked about?
Sure.
Okay, so, what, what I heard, what Linda and I talked about, and I think she'll correct me if I'm wrong, is that she asked for it and Tom said, "I don't have any records." So, effectively, that becomes the answer to her records request act. But that brings up another issue of, why are there no records? Why didn't Tom have estimates from different people? So, as a board, what our deficiency is, is that we need to make sure when we're out getting estimates for things, that we have a documentation of what we did, so that everybody can see who we called, what the prices were, how we picked one or the other. So, that was something that we did wrong. And Linda's point was, you know, we've been here, some of us, three and a half years, well, two of us. So, we should have known that already, so... I said, "Well, you know, we've never had any..."
That was my point.
That was Linda's point, too. Do you want to say anything more about it?
Well, yeah, when I went to get a bid just for printing the flyers, I bought three bids and that was under four hundred dollars. This is forty-seven hundred dollars, so I really should have, you know, there should be a paper trail.
Okay, so...
Public expenses.
So, Shay called me up and we were talking about the bids that she got. And I said, "Well, who are you going to use?" And she said, "Well, I'm going to use Company X." And I said, "Well, what was their bid?" Because I've seen the emails going back and forth. And I said, "You can't use Company X, because Company Y underbid them." And so, Shay used Company Y to print her stuff instead, so... You know, so, we got, that's what we just have to be really careful of, is that we're doing that and it's obvious to everybody.
Do we have a policy on how many bids we're supposed to get?
Did you see one?
I don't remember exactly.
I think it's three. I think it's three. Is there a dollar measure?
But I think that there's a, there's a requirement for an informal bid process at $1,200, uh, $1,500, I think. And then, I believe it's $5,000, but it might be higher now. You're required by state law, I think, to take it out to a formal bid.
I think that's, seal bids, 15,000.
Yeah.
That's what Bob Hunt said.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if it used to be five, but now it's 15, that makes sense because five is starting to seem a little low. But, um, it's, you know, I'm sorry, but it's common sense. It's not, we're not talking neurosurgery here, you know? If you're going to get three bids, you get three bids. You write it down in case somebody asks you questions about it. Also.
And then people refuse to bid, I think that was the question. People refused to bid, it was just too low.
Well.
Well, we should document that, too. That would have been better to document.
The other thing is that, um, you don't necessarily have to take the lowest bid. If you say when you're, when you're requesting bids, that you expect X, Y, and Z performance and A, B, and C standards and D, E, and F to go along with it, and you want a price, if somebody gives you a price of $200 for the printing and says, well, I can do A, B, and C, but I can't do the E and F, then they're not the best bid. They're the lowest, but not the best.
But they didn't actually meet the bids, so we don't have to take them.
Well, yeah, but if you, if you're being clear, if there's some reason, if they're, if they're not, if there's some reason for you to assume that they're not going to perform properly, maybe they, maybe in the phone calls or the process of getting the bids in, they've made some mistakes or done something. You don't necessarily have to take the lowest, you have to take the lowest bets.
With the reason if we didn't take the absolute lowest.
If you don't take the lowest, you should have a damn good reason. Yes.
So, I wanted to apologize that you got Linda upset last month. Her blood pressure probably needed that.
I apologize that I did get upset. However, um, it's not an unusual request and I felt that I remained fairly calm until I was treated brutally. And I believe that Director Smysik didn't just say that he didn't have it when I reiterated that he should have written notes or he could give me notes now or whatever. His response was, you're not going to get it.
No, I never should have did.
Yes, you did. There are witnesses here, he said. He said, you're not going to get it.
So, we'll do a better job. I think we only need to do a good job and keep track of what, we should really have bids from the printing.
We had them, I sent them out. But I kept them within the committee. Yeah, I have.
Put a package.
Yeah, I have a package.
Just, um, I forgot what I was going to say. Sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I also made a request, a public records request, and I was told, sorry, you're not going to, you know, the information's not available and you're not going to get it as well. I mean, so I think it's somewhat difficult. I mean, it's, I don't think it's a preferential thing. I think it's just a matter of, it doesn't, not much.
The other thing is requests don't have to be in writing. You can't prove you made the request if it's not in writing, but I felt like I didn't need to make it in writing because it was made at the meeting. And there were plenty of witnesses to confirm that I made a public records request.
But I think that we understand that Tom could have done a better job at taking notes, but he had no notes and he told you he had no notes and that can constitute our answer. Unless you would like something in writing that says the same thing.
I still, no, I want some contemporary, I want some extemporaneous notes. I would like for Tom to write, take the best of his memory, write down a list of the places he contacted and what their names and their telephone numbers are and what their bids were, or if they refused to bid.
Tom, it'd be really good if you could try to recall.
I can do an outline on how I conducted that, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, anybody you talk to gets something submitted to us who does something.
Okay, and I'll provide that to the board.
Thank you.
I had a comment.
Yeah.
Some public records act requests may not fall within the jurisdiction of this part for it, so, um, that does. It was stuff that we, it was information that we were handling. And some public records act requests may not be within our jurisdiction of things that we do.
And so, what was Lisa's request? I don't want to.
You know, my request was regarding emails that were going back and forth about keeping me out of any involvement with the Children's Center, which does fall under the Parks Board jurisdiction. But I was told there are no emails to be found, no documentation, when I had seen a couple of the emails, so I knew there are emails going back and forth. But the board decided not to show any emails.
Actually, I referred your request to the attorney and I didn't hear any more back from her about that.
So, we can follow up on that. I think emails were read in this meeting. I think they were read in the public records.
But the request would have been answered, there would have been more emails.
So, we'll put that on the minutes and we'll follow up on that.
Okay, you guys, thank you.
Thank you, by the way.
You're welcome. You guys are done. So, everybody needs to keep, keep in their mind that they're coming up with a really cool. Yeah, they're coming up with a really cool summer program. And we had a little get-together at my house and hashed out stuff and accounting and ways for them to cut their costs more on Monday night. And so, it sounds really exciting. So, I want us to support them, tell everybody, you know, we need to, we need to get people from out of the canyon because if we get people from out of the canyon to come in, we could make enough money in the summer program to pay for the whole rest of the year. And that, that would be like the cool goal.
I, I will still go take, um, to other, to other schools and do a, a handout and please send this out with your kids. I, I just need some paper.
Okay.
So, if you've got an idea on where you could get some, something to, call Lori because she can make it and we'll have something to give to people. And let's bring people up here. Because we had the Head Start people came and they'd come out and look at the facility and she's like, well, where do all the really poor people live? And I said, well, if I could take you around. And she goes, no, I mean really poor people that don't have cars. So, so one of the questions on that survey is, you know, what's your, what's your income? And the other question is, how many kids do you have?
No, it was, the way the question was worded, I think was the last question. It said something about if you may be like low-income and if you think you apply, check here or something. So, we're, we're giving them the option.
We didn't want to put the income on because we were afraid you'd all think it was invasive. But if you know somebody where there may be the kids have moved back in with the parents and they have, especially if they're single moms, they're going to qualify. Because Head Starts used to have in a place in a neighborhood where nobody has cars because they're that poor. And they have to qualify strictly to federal guidelines or they get, you know, they get axed. So, if we have enough of those people, they'll come in and help our program and help it a lot.
Do they contact Head Start directly or did they contact us, like, get a, a group and say, and search Head Start and list the number?
I would say the best thing would be to call Lori. So, everything goes to one person at the center that's private. And that way, if we get a quantity, we'll talk to the lady. But she, the one lady I know is on our board and she was just gushing at her board meeting about our location and she would love to get it. It's just how do they get the people there that would qualify? I mean, how would they transport the kids? And that's what she couldn't, she's afraid that we don't have that volume.
Well, I'd like to do some outreach. Ooh, pick, pick one. Okay, I'd like to do some outreach at Baker because there's a lot of people there living on the edge or living in mobile homes. Usually, the, um, how to put this? Our most stressed citizens come from Baker Canyon. They live there for like 500 a month. And, uh.
I completely forgot about that, so. I was thinking about people whose kids have moved back in with their parents and, you know, maybe it's a single mom or that. Those people qualify and if, and it's like no cost to them for their kids to go to the preschool five days a week. And then, we get reimbursed, we get paid for that and we just need to get a quantity that makes it worth their time to put a person there and they could help.
We have another program as well, Public Works. If, if a single parent is working and can show pays out and can go down to the county and get in their database and wait for a social worker and then they pay the daycare bill. And we've had quite a few parents over the years and that's helped us and helped them. We just had to wait for that money.
On the surveys, one of the questions, I believe, is something to the effect of, if you know someone that is, is, is interested, could go to school, like, I forgot how it's worded, but there is, so whoever fills out that grant, I mean, it's not, if you want to go door to door and talk to people and write in names, that's great because those surveys will come back to the board and then those names will be, be able to be available to the children's center. So, now you have a contact. It's the people that, oh, these are people that know someone or these are people that have children. So, it does function that way. It should generate some interest that way.
Um, has the Children's Center been discussed yet or it hasn't?
Right, no.
Well, I, I, one, I think a couple of weeks ago, when Linda, we, we were over at the Children's Center, we were brainstorming ideas on a poster paper. And one of the ideas was just that we would allow eighth graders to come into the school or is that, is that still on the table or has that been knocked out? Because honestly, because I, because sometimes I go down to Children's Center, you know, the bus, the parking lot, not only one student gets off there, but there's a lot of, I, I'm sure there's a lot of eighth grader students that are on that bus that could potentially have an after-school program at that, at, at, at the Children's Center.
One of the things that I'm working on is how do we start a program that goes all the way through 12th grade? So, what are we going to do to help all your kids not be home alone until you guys get there? So, there's a program in Orange County statewide now called Think Together and it's an after-school tutoring program. And they, they'll do it for free, so there may actually end up being no cost because my wife's pretty sure she can go out and get grant money to run maybe all of our after-school programs. And because it's such a big deal now, because law enforcement realizes that, and forgot my name. So, when Cole gets out of school and he goes home alone and, you know, nobody's there to take care of him, he's like little, you know, mischief hand. I don't want to say that. Yeah, so, you know what? You get our eye of Cole. But, but the issue is, is that due to age, you know? If they were, if they come up with a fun program that they'll actually go to.
Well, you can, we expand the license to 12 years old.
Right. Yeah. And also, just wanted to add.
Can they be, what, can they be in the after-school program up to 14?
They would be, they would be, yes, yes.
And then, over 14, it has to be a separate.
I believe that's, that's separate, yes.
So, we're working on, so we should do it to get that age group. And then, we're going to work on the, up to 12th, 12th grade age group. And it has to be separate programs because you can't have little kids with medium-aged kids with the high school kids. It's not, it's not allowed. So, that's what, that's one of the things I'm trying to work on is how do we get, where we get the funding from that, so.
Well, I know that, I think the last point that I was here is that I said something about our school newspaper, putting an advertisement in there. Well, according to the SBUSD rules and guidelines, that we consider advertising, so we cannot do that because apparently there's, there'd be, you know, issues with that. But I, I just don't see the issue, and if somebody can elaborate on that, why the, you know, being an issue to have an advertisement in a school newspaper? Because honestly, I think it'd be a great idea.
Make a story.
I'm sure, we'll, we'll send you over to talk to Frank's wife. Janet. We'll send you over to talk to Janet about how you write your news article about the Children's Center that becomes a news article with a lot of information that is different.
That's right.
We'll hook you up, we'll hook you up with Janet.
How about a story about the summer camp program and how you make that?
Well, yeah, well.
It's a story, it's not an ad, that's what we have to figure.
We could do story and then we could hide the ad in the story. I think I can.
We wouldn't say that out loud, but we just do a story.
You just hold a story and at the end of it, you say, very many things.
Okay, I think you answered one. So, because on the questionnaire, it has along the lines of Think Together and I have no idea what that was. So, that's a, is that a state program?
It started in Orange County and it's since gone statewide. It, it works so good. It took a, it took a neighborhood in, called Shalimar Street in Costa Mesa, it was just complete drug, drug city. And the neighbors said, you know, enough of this, and they got the city to block the street and they, church people went in and they got an apartment owner to say, give them one apartment to do the after-school tutoring. All the parents in the apartment realized that if their kids went there, they weren't getting into mischief, you know, like Cole might. And so, the parents centered, they said their kids are going. And so, I mean, it kind of, if this works, all of you have to say to your neighborhood, you know, potential juvenile delinquents, no, you need to go to that thing. It's fun, you're going to learn stuff, you're going to get into college. This is important stuff. So, that'll be all of us adults.
Stick with your house, Mike.
To get the kids and the parents' attitude to change that way.
Yeah, so that's pretty cool. I just think that a lot of people aren't going to, you know, I don't know what that is.
If you Googled Think Together, you would have found out all you wanted.
The other, the other thing quotes is the witching hour and I don't know, and that's on D, academically orientated, orientated enrichment after-school program for K-12, comma, low cost or no cost, semicolon, the witching hour. What, I don't, what's that?
Witching hour is the whole, the Orange County Community Foundation came out with the thing and it talks about what happens between 2:30 when the kids get off school and 6:00 or 7:00 when the parents get home. And everybody's apparently picking up the name, calling it the witching hour. We want our kids off the streets and into a program so that they're not idle hands.
Okay, so that's.
I bet if you Googled all that, you'd find out all you wanted to know.
Yeah, but the average survey taker is not, I'm not going to.
Well, they'll do that, but the poor people don't have, unless they run out to the library, they don't have a computer, which leads me to my next point. And that is, if we bring in the older kids, our big attraction are, and something that we really need, is a good, up-to-date computer system with good Wi-Fi that they can get on. And maybe we can block it, let's, let's get one of our, you know.
There's, there's a computer giveaway programs out there with big agencies and stuff. If you're a nonprofit and you can get them, so we would work on that.
I just wondered if anybody knew what the demographics were over at the ranch across from, I guess, I guess, kind of Jackson Ranch, you know, the, the whole property over there.
From Majeska entrance, yeah.
Yeah, like, how many are there kids that are down there? How many homes are there? I mean.
Do they know English?
Do they know English? I mean, but I meant, that might be an interesting place to.
No, habla English.
Just a thought.
That could be a big hysterical problem.
That's what I was thinking. I'm going to, because Baker Canyon, that's what we were just talking, Baker Canyon, you can't stay there longer than two weeks now. So, I don't think there's people that are.
Longer residents anymore.
You have to, I have a friend that camps there. You go two weeks and then you have to leave and then you can come back for two weeks. But, so I'm wondering, like, if that ranch area might be.
Or they go over to O'Neill and then they go to where?
Right.
But we still have the same impoverished set and if they have a place, I know even if I were poor, I would want the best for my child and if I had this opportunity, I might make the effort. So, I'm saying, let's reach out.
We have a van, so we might be able to go to come up.
Do any of our teachers speak Spanish? Do we know or?
Okay.
I'm trying to say the words, but I'm afraid if they went on tape, I'd be kicked off the board. Cool.
I noticed this is about the van. And I know that the van only offered after-school, but I have a friend, Louis Tonkovich, and Grant, both, who both go to school as I do. And sometimes Grant's dad or Andrew's dad has to go to work early, like 6:00 a.m. And sometimes they, they have, you know, carpool and that can be inconvenient. So, so, see, neither. Well, anyway, I noticed that we could, if this could be open, is that how a possible like AM service for going to the school?
If that comes down, and we'll have to talk to Lori about it, but it comes down to, for one person, we probably can't make it work financially.
Well, I mean, there's multiple people that that's, that go along that route, like, there's one up on the Majeska grade, there's two in Majeska.
Why don't you talk to Lori about it after another day, and then see? Because if there's a need, we can fill it, but we just, because how much hours it costs to have the driver person there?
And wear and tear on the van.
And then there's also two people between the Majeska.
Will you talk to Lori about it?
So I went to the hospital, the Chalk Hospital today, and in the waiting room, there was a lady with her little table set up, and she was, she was from a dental office somewhere in Orange. She had three toothbrushes, coloring markers for the kids, and she was promoting her office. I think she got, so many people took her business card, all these kids wanted that toothbrush, you know? I think if we set something up, and maybe someone who has time to talk about the school, there's a lot of people from Orange, and everyone goes to Chalk, but a lot of from that area, you know? And these kids are sick right there, unfortunately, but yeah, you know, it's a bunch of children and the mother, right there. And then, you know, I talked to the lady about dental thing, and, you know, she got me hooked. I'm easy there.
So what we might need, Lori, is to try to find volunteers, so we can teach our story, so you go to different places. You guys can go all the time to do that. That's a great idea.
I, if anybody's interested, I can tell you where it is.
Okay.
It just should be somebody with kids already, because us oldsters are going to get sick, we're not used to the jerks. I noticed it either, I was getting sick.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, you guys are.
I have one question about the code. It says conflict of interest code, which is next on the agenda. What does that mean exactly?
Well, you just sit there for a minute, and you might as well sit too, because it's going to apply to you. The next item of business is, we have a conflict of interest code, and it applies to the board members, it applies to the attorney, and they, there was a new version, and we voted a couple of months ago that we were compliant with the new version. And the Board of Supervisors office called back and said, how come your children's center director isn't on it? Because she can make financial decisions and buy stuff. I'm like, oh, we never thought about that. So tonight, we're going to be voting to amend our conflict of interest code, so the children's center director will be called category OC-01 for full disclosure reporting status on Form 700 conflicts of interest statements.
Are our other employees on it too?
According to letter 22, they have to have a conflict of interest policy and sign a statement for type 22, but they don't have to do the second.
Well, the Board of Supervisors wants you to be the 700 firm, so you get the joy, I'll give you a password, no, just, just.
Just Lori.
Just Lori, because you're the one who can authorize money, and so that's why you have to do it. So there needs to be a motion to say exactly what this says. So, does somebody like to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to amend our conflict of interest code, so that the director of the Silverado Children's Center will be in category OC-01 for full disclosure reporting status on Form 700 conflicts of interest statements.
Is there a second motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can allow that. It's public information. You're able to see everything you own now. Okay. We tried something different with the agenda, and put stuff under the committee, so we'll all decide, so did that answer your question?
That's it, thank you.
So you guys don't have to stay in the same room. You can.
Is that your cup?
So we're, we're trying something new, and we're going to put reports under the places that we think that they go, and we'll decide if we like it or not, or if it's just confusing, because it's not all in the place we're used to seeing it. So standing committees, recreation, Shay, you want to talk about the look to approve the Silverado skate?
Is anybody not in the meeting where we talked about the skate park, and showed pictures and stuff like that?
Just give me a thumbnail of it.
All right.
Is this skate park stuff back here? We're going to put it on the, on the ground out there, it's portable.
Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep my mouth shut, and I'll just follow later.
The, the skate park equipment that you see there and back there. Skate park.
I've heard state, S-T-A.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, we don't have room for a state park.
I'm sorry.
The, the, the previous board, couple boards back, before, sent out a, a survey, got back, what people wanted was, number one, I think yoga, and number two was more hiking programs, and I believe number three and four were swimming pool and stuff for teenagers to do. And currently, there's not much in the canyons for teenagers to do unless they like going hiking in the woods or riding bikes on a canyon road. So my husband started looking at skateboarding equipment. We couldn't afford it, it had to be of a certain quality for our park district insurance to cover it. And then we got a phone call from someone who worked over at Etnies, the shoe company over there, by the Etnies Skate Park. And they were getting new equipment, and they gave us that. So we got that for free, it's about $3,000 to $4,000 value of that temporary equipment. It rolls around, like you see right now, it flips up on its side on wheels, and then when you set it up, it's, it stays in place, the rails, that they slide the wheels on have to be bolted down, but they would be removed for music in the parks, weddings, big events that are here that require the whole park usage. So I was asked to design like a policy for the skate park prior to voting to approve a skate park here, that would outline duties and responsibilities of who's going to do what. So currently, it would basically be the facilities, recreation, the facilities committee, and Steve Reich to move the stuff.
Every day.
And if someone wanted, I, I proposed that if someone wanted a private event, and they wanted us to move it, just for their private event to not have it, that maybe we would have to put a charge for that, so Steve would get paid. Anyway, you can see the equipment there, we can hang this around. That's what it looks like. And this is kind of a, where it's proposed to be on the blacktop over there, the blacktop has a full basketball court, but it's seldom used, and we could utilize half of, half of the blacktop near the handball courts for this temporary skate park, and in front of the, the stage. Steve already secured the front of the stage, so that if skateboards kick out, they won't damage the front of the stage.
Shay, do we know, like, how many teenage kids, maybe you said, said that and I didn't hear you, how many teenage kids would use the park? I mean, do we have kind of any demographics?
Why do you got to be teenage?
Well, okay. How many people?
Yeah, it's actually, there's actually, it's not just, this, it sounds like for teens, but there's a lot of younger kids.
I know older guys, I understand.
Yeah, there's a lot of families that are going to that Etnies skate park right now that are excited about having to get here. I'm sorry, here, you want to see that?
I know, I see myself, just off and going. It's kind of, if you have any dreams, you build it.
But, no, but does Etnies charge, and we're not going to charge? That's what I'm asking.
Well, the people that I know, for reason A, B, or C, cannot frequently get down to Etnies easily, transportation is an issue, we have no public transportation. So the kids on the bike all the time, you would live down there.
What was that, your insurance coverage, will it be covering this?
Yeah, they already do that. They were really, they was, they was a no-brainer for Capri when we proposed it a long time ago. They just said, just let people know that they skate at their own risk, and that there's rules, and these are the state rules for us to be covered, and, and they can't, no one can sue us if they get hurt with these. So we will, if it's approved, we will get real signs made. He, our Capri insurance guy said you could just laminate some of these temporarily and put them around the park, and you're good to go. But we would want to make real metal signs and put them around it, so, anyway.
So this kid, Sean skates at Etnies, and he says that they charge like 25 or 30 bucks to skate there at a day? I mean, would we not want to charge five bucks or something to make income?
No, we don't have anybody here running, we have to pay someone to do that. They, they run that as a business. We're recreation parks, and we're using tax money, they're not, you know? We're providing services for our community, and the demographics of our community, and the needs of our community, and has a place for, you know, small children to play on the playground structure, a place for kids to play ball, a place for grownups to get music, maybe a place for kids to skate part of the time.
Well, you could, you could have a skate school, skateboard school, and charge for that.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I didn't even think about that. That's a great idea.
Like at Tucker. So we thought we would put a donations box that they could tuck around.
The only reason I'm saying that is not, I mean, I think serving the community is great, but if, Etnies is charging so much, I think we're not, we're going to be serving outside the community, then we're going to, more than we're going to be serving our community.
Except that what they have over there is really grand, and it's concrete, and it's got bowls, and it's got all this stuff, and all we're going to have is two little half-pots and two little rails, and it's really not going to be a big draw, other than our own community. Because people that want to go to a real skate park, they can go to a lot of different cities around, most of the cities have, that the cities run, so.
When do you think this will be completed? I mean, up in line?
Oh, you mean, well, we, Steve and I, we have to lay it out, where we would actually utilize these, this equipment, this was suggested by Fresh Park, it's the way, our layout for the park. But these two rails would need sunk-in bolts that, that'll flat, and that's it. Whatever Steve thinks sinking bolts into the ground would be. No, six days. A week. Because that stuff's ready to go to set up. Let's see, the bolts to hold the rails would be the only difficult portion. Yes. Unless it falls within what Steve would be doing for us hourly, it would be whatever it costs him for parks.
We'll have to sink sleeves into the ground, so we can bolt the things down into the ground. Because we can't have something sticking up, you know?
The two rails. So that would be eight sink bolts, right?
So in other words, once it's set up, it's assumed to be safe and operational?
Yeah, it's a temporary deal, so it's not, you don't need a permit for it, I don't think.
So I, I do kind of think that we should run all this by Capri, and say, here's what we're going to, here's what we want to do.
Definitely.
Have we done all the steps A, B, and C to make them happy?
Because he already said we did.
Yeah, I just want to have a nice background, just as we do. Okay, so, so the other day, Shay and I were out, and she came over and she said, she was talking with a lady, and the little boy had his arm, his arm falling off our play equipment, and we're like, oh, man. But, but that's, everybody needs to know, you know, this is, you let your kids come and play, you know, when they fall and get hurt.
Not it.
That's it. That's, it's not our fault.
And then the, the policy is, skate park policy and operating procedures, the first part of it is the, the ordinance that we already drew up, which is according to the state law. And then responsibility procedures and maintenance procedures. I think Mary Schreiber was one of the ones that wanted to see that. If you want to see a copy of this?
I'd like to.
Okay. Do you want me to read it?
No, that's okay, I can get a, you know.
Because it basically says, the facilities committee and/or the caretaker will be responsible for setup and breakdown, prior to immediately following community center park events that require usage of the skate park basketball court area. Facility users requesting removal of the equipment for events must request the removal by submitting the SMRPD facility use agreement. That probably wouldn't include music in the parks, because we already have them on our calendar. Upon approval by the caretaker or recreation committee, the equipment may be temporarily removed, stored behind the handball courts, or behind building A where it was for a couple of years. And then the SMRPD facilities committee will inspect skate park equipment regularly for defects or damages, and portions needing repairs that are found unsafe will be removed promptly by the caretaker. In the event of needed repairs in excess of $500, the SMRPD facilities committee and caretaker will present needed repairs and cost analysis to the full board for approval. If no approval for repairs is granted, the equipment will remain stored until funds for repair are made available.
Shay, Shay, based on your comment that you made a minute ago, should we add that a fee may be assessed at the description?
Oh, I did, and I, did I, did I forget to print out the right one?
The discretion of the recreation committee.
Yeah, I think I printed out the wrong one, because I did put that in there. Okay.
I have a question also. Since this, this is equipment that was someplace else, are replacement parts still available for it in case of damage?
When they, when they're no longer available, the equipment will be.
This, this equipment right now is available on at Fresh Park.
Okay, that's what, I mean, I had, so it is.
It's current.
And so there are replacement parts available, because that's sometimes, you know, it's fine if it's, one thing, but if you can't fix it, then it's not a viability.
At some point, it's going to be obsolete.
I'd like to say one more thing about this skate park. It'll improve your property values.
Is it going to be in the way of playing basketball?
It's going to take part of the, it's going to take half the court, so we'll be having a half-court basketball hall itself. So it could be at a certain.
And no more handball, right?
Pardon me?
No more tennis and handball?
Well, I, I actually think that it shouldn't be on this side, it needs to be on the other side, because there's no reason to block the tennis and handball, and it could just as easily be on the other side.
The reason that it's proposed over here is because, remember, the left side is free. But maybe, we can get around that, maybe we could have those underneath. Yeah, it, it can be switched to the other side on that map, but currently, we have some issues with some tree roots that are pushing up on our blacktop, and it's on our list of things to do, to fix that.
What is the, what's the top, what is this right here?
That's, that's, they can either go like this, or they can be buttoned up to each other, and go up and have a table top and down the other side.
What's this?
That's, we have two of these. This should be smaller.
Do we have three things that we're going to?
We have, we have four.
So I'm not sure for any of you to do a final vote, do we do, as a committee, get it all blessed, but actually, we're giving everything we think is ready to go.
My only concern is, I was really hoping for Easter vacation. When is Easter vacation?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, the tree will, the tree.
Well, we have to take it down for Easter, Easter breakfast.
Twentieth, Easter breakfast is on the twentieth, at the end of your vacation. But yeah, I gotta be afraid, because we get out, we, we, Easter weekend is on the twentieth. No, sorry, the twenty first, twenty first.
Anyway, we can't, we can't rush it. It has to be done, the way it has to be done, so.
Well, Capri already told us, go ahead and set it up, and just put these on, you're good to go, and, and Betsy already told us that we did everything we needed to do in this ordinance. I don't understand why we would need more approval by them prior to approving this skate park, because we don't have to put it out yet, but we can still approve that we're going to do it based on the response from Capri.
Yeah, that's fine with me. We'll approve it pending we get approval from Betsy, and from Capri, and Roger.
I'd be happy with that, because then we could get it out by, by Easter break. And we have families. Yeah, that's not a problem. Now we need to open it for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Any more discussion?
Any discussion on this topic?
We're doing, so the motion is that we're going to approve it as long as our insurance company and our attorneys say that we dotted our I's and crossed our K's correctly.
I mean, I was just asking Steve how long it would take him to set it up and tear it down. And it, I mean, that's gonna be like almost a day's worth of.
No, no, it won't be that long. It'll, it'll, I don't know.
Like, I mean, I think we need to look at like how many hour, I mean, to just put it up, set it down, put it up, so, I mean, how many hours are we gonna be looking at monthly that we have to tear down or set up?
It may, it may not be able to go up and down a lot. It may go up and stay for two weeks and it may have to go down for a month.
And, and, um, we should add on that motion, uh, contention on changing the policy to read that there might be a fee.
Yeah, and I did add that to the policy, but I printed out the wrong one.
I agree with that.
Well, the, the one we're voting on is the one that includes a fee in it.
Yes.
I have a question, Frank. Are you gonna talk about advertising for this today? No.
But if you have any ideas, talk to Lori because they, they need all the ideas they get. So who you got?
Yeah.
Anybody, anything, anybody's got?
I have all the ideas, but we need to, I mean.
We're gonna have another brainstorming meeting.
Yeah, we just gotta figure out anything we wanna do and see if we can work some way around that.
Is there any more, uh, comments about the motion on the table for the skate park?
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you. It'll be really exciting. We'll see what happens. And if there's any,
I think it's a good idea.
Issues, we can all.
Here's a young kid's.
Idea.
Can you try to repeat it though one more time?
Oh, sorry. Um, I. No, we already. Yeah, no, I just printed out the wrong one. The other one has a fee attached to someone requesting it being for their own private event.
Well, you don't get to pick. So do you guys have an, an RSC summer camp ready that we're gonna, how much?
No, Kevin, Kevin has volunteered to do it, but we're waiting for some more insurers. But if we want to, um, if we want to approve just having one, it would be like this size for $276 to put in all of the sentries. Would be this size. This is the, so, but.
Everything they do.
That would be everything they do. And then if we wanted, we could put a flyer in for, uh, ours is kind of for 70 bucks. After we make a flyer, but there's no summer camp flyer yet.
What's the flyer for the whole, the whole?
That, I've never, very expensive.
Like fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Because it goes to, goes to Villa Park and it goes to places.
It'd be cheaper to have a bigger ad. The, the ad that's a little taller than this is $500. And this ad is three, $276, this size.
So some of you that have kids, if, if you got your sentry and you live in Villa Park and you opened it and this, this page came out and it talks about summer camp programs at the children's center, it might be worth doing fifteen hundred dollars. Or we might say, okay, let's, Villa Park's doesn't have enough kids our age probably. Let's pick the areas that have the most kids our age. We might be able to cut our cost, but that seems like people might go, I don't know, summer camp. Versus, versus the ad they're gonna go through and it's gonna be gone.
Greg, the, the way they, the way they parcel that out, they have sections and info and they have so much, sort of the living fur.
Right.
And it's really a crapshoot to say, let's pick this one over that one. Cause you don't know where the kids are and we don't want to come up here.
Seventy dollars per thousand flyers inserted. Ours happens to be under a thousand, so we know that it's seventy dollars.
But there are some areas that are quite large. But if you bought a whole package, and I said fifteen hundred, it may be eighteen hundred. It's pretty high because it goes to everybody all the way, you know?
We might try to talk.
You're saying.
Yeah, like maybe we pick, do they send it to Portola's, the sentry?
No. No, it doesn't go anywhere.
We need to get it going to Portola's, then maybe we do an ad in the, in the sentry. And we do one of saddleback.
We have one week to get, and Kevin's willing to do it. And I've got all of those play out pictures of something that we did years ago that someone made and just switch it. Yeah.
He used to say more programs.
It needs information to draw people in.
Like, I told Lori Monday, I said, you gotta get these programs done. This is like, cause now is when people are gonna pick where their kids are going for summer. So, if, if you guys want to, if they can get it together in time, we'll.
And I'll send it to you. I'll send it to the whole board.
I'll look at, what I propose is if we look at like maybe three different options or four different options, there's the whole entire, there's a couple select groups or just, in other words, if we break it down and say A, B, and C, or D.
Oh, options for, okay.
For the distribution.
Okay.
What if we include your parts down at the end of Chapman and New Boys? What if somewhere where it looks like there's a lot of kids?
That's a flyer. And I'm talking about an ad. And he's ready to start on an ad right now.
And I think the flyer, to me, if you're gonna have enough information in the flyer, I think that's, because then the flyer can be distributed.
I don't think the flyer and skip, yeah, same as flyer hundred and fifty on this. And let's see if we can do a flyer. So Kevin, we might want you to do a, a flyer instead of the ad.
Instead of an ad?
So we can put everything in it.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll work on that.
It should be chock full of information.
But this would be ready for April and the flyer won't be ready, um, for a month. Because we only have one week to get it in. So that's my issue.
Kevin, you have, Kevin, you have three days to talk to Lori and have the flyer ready because it has to be done.
I've done it faster than.
What if I find other funding, we could still do an ad. If I find other funding, we could still do an ad for the summer camp in the, for, uh, for, for April.
No, you're not up yet. Mike?
We'd be better off putting a banner, cause what you wanna do is catch the commuters who need to drop their kit off going one way or the other than wasting the money on.
You are brilliant. That is brilliant.
Lori has just had banners being printed up and they're gonna be ready in a good day.
That's big banner, put them up.
You know what? The banner that Irvine Park put out at the corner of Jamboree that was really long and they had a summer camp all of a sudden. And it made me very nervous a couple of years ago. And it showed pictures of kids climbing on ropes and everything, but that got a lot of attention. And I think you're right.
You gotta catch the commuters coming through. They do need to drop their kids on the way to work and pick them up all the way home. Cause you're not gonna be able to, to gatch an area where they're at, cause they might be coming from Anaheim. Might be coming further. And if they can drop their kid on the way through and pick them up on the way back, it saves them.
Twenty footer.
Yeah, a big one.
So a flyer in there.
Minimum.
Get a couple poles up and hang it.
Okay, so, um, you know, they talked about putting, um, telephone poles up, you know, as a, like an old-fashioned entrance. But that's going this way and the road's going that way. So we need to get something out that we can hang a banner, banner crosswise.
Right.
Across the street. Or do try and.
Actually, what I'm telling you, that's a banner.
But you can't read them. They, they jangle. We need something that's flat.
Right across Centennial Canyon Road.
I used to put a summer camp banner on the fence. I used to.
Here's our banner, right? I have a flagpole at a forty-five degree angle. And how much of that can you read in the writing?
And then blow it around.
Just blow it around.
Blow it.
It's a summer camp.
So I think, I think Mike's idea is better, but we gotta.
Well, no, I like the idea. We do a triangle, just do two, three poles so you can catch both sides and then go second regal.
We need to put something we can mount on top of that.
You know, it's so small, it's so small though, man.
Does it need to be right at the children's center?
No, I'm, I'm thinking Jamboree.
You're right, cause that's a bad turn right there. That, you know, everybody's trying to make that turn, you know?
Lori, Lori is gonna put banners in front of the children's center. She's having a maid, isn't she?
Yeah, the problem is they gotta know where to tap. So you can throw the flyers right, but they, they really don't know where to tap.
What we should do is get something in the existing sign that won't rip it down if there's a man. So maybe, Stephen, Mike, you could help us design something that's big enough to read as people drive by.
The sign is designed to have like hanging, like, oh, it's a summer camp and a day. That would at least be, and it's just a door that hangs off of that sign. So that's at least something.
Well, that might be good. That might do it.
Pole, pole.
Um, just two ideas to throw up there is that, two years ago, no, three years ago, um, I know, I know that the, uh, it was run, it was run through, I believe Lori Parks, who just came, she did, um, she, she did the, um, she did the, um, the garden tours through the Majes, the Art Majeski song. On, I, I think, cause you know, we charge $20 per person to get in there. And honestly, I think that could be a, you know, possible fundraising, you know?
They made that a fundraiser for the children's center.
Oh, they did, I.
We put that on the list. That's on the list.
Yeah, that's, it was a good point, too. Yeah, they have that on the list.
Yeah.
So that's a great idea.
And the other one is that, you know, the, uh, real estate poster signs, you know, you know, where you write the sign of the flyers? Possibly something like that, where we'd have, where we'd have the sign. And then we have, then we have the schedule or a flyer in one of those boxes so that people know.
That's a great idea.
That there's a, that there's a schedule and that they know what it's about. Cause if you just say summer camp, they're not gonna know where to go. We need a date. They're not gonna know what's gonna be coming up. They're not gonna know what, where, where they could be going.
Maybe on the sign, we could put the website.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same website. It'll be several odd. It's just not like the old ones.
So I think I could, Aunt Chris, Aunt Manrika, she had a summer camp a couple of years ago that I helped with.
Borrow her sign?
Um, well, borrow her pictures of the kids. Um, I think we can get approval. Cleo is one of my students. Um, but she has a lot of pic, pictures of the summer camp and the events they had. And so if you tap her for your flyer, she's got ready made and I'm sure we can get the okay from the parent.
I have a lot from twelve years of summer camp.
But she's got horses.
Yeah, I don't have horses.
So we need, we need this to be done.
Miniature horses.
We need this to be done like in two or three days. So could you get with Kevin and see what you can pull together?
We can't get a flyer printed in two days for the sentry. It took, it took like five or six days.
That's bad.
The flyer, this, when, um, Mike. He's been doing 2,500 of everything that he does for us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if we're gonna print that many, but I mean, if we just need it some for an inch, I don't know how many we're gonna need. We could go quickie print, you know, just.
Oh.
You know, but that's quite expensive, but it's.
Wouldn't it be expensive for a, for a nine, two, six, seven, six insert? That'd be less than a thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, you could just do that.
Oh.
Just, just to stop gas, measure it, get it out there and then do this.
Do the nicer ones.
Okay, all right.
So do we need to vote some money for that? Or are you gonna bring it back to us and we're gonna vote in a subsequent meeting?
That would be hard to do.
In a subsequent meeting? Do we wanna give a budget, give maximum budget for it?
I think, I'm guessing that a printing, two color, I'm four color two sizes. By quickie print, it's like seventeen cents a piece. So if we can estimate how many.
That'd be like Staples or something, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
While you wait, give it to them and go have lunch and come back.
Okay.
That's a hundred and seventy bucks.
Okay.
And so how much should it be for ours at code?
It's seventy dollars. Cause we only need like eight hundred and it comes about seventy dollars.
Why don't we say five or eight hundred dollars and see if we can figure out if there's a surrounding area that'd be worth it. We'll have to talk to Lori about.
Okay, okay.
I'd pick a nation, Mary. If it's something close enough, you know, maybe.
Portola, it doesn't go to. It'd have to be north tested or east or.
So Villa Park or.
North Tuscan, north Tuscan.
Yeah, but there's no kids there. That's what I'm saying. We gotta go to Lizzira.
But they don't have a, a sentry.
No, go back there.
And she had a really good idea and we missed it. And it was getting an ad in the, um, the college summer thing that went out.
Yeah, they're visiting, we're writing that one. Okay, so is there a motion to do the maximum of for this ad?
My, this is her flyer for the summer camp.
Were the issues, was there any printing? I make a motion to have the, please, eight hundred dollars for the distribution of a summer, yes, flyer. It's gonna be easier to get.
That would work because we have a week.
We have two weeks until we get it.
The motion was to approve item, item A two. Everybody vote it out. Okay, next, there was something else that I think you want to budget. My next, um, okay, you guys have, every time I hand out something about doing the budget, everybody's eyes are on it. Nobody does anything. So we are going to have a weekly budget meeting. And we'll probably do it Tuesdays at seven until it's done. So I'll confirm with everybody that we can do it for next Tuesday, but we'll have a weekly budget meeting until it's done. Open space and trails, the, um, I'm gonna announce the meeting. It's, it's, it's really hard being president trying to do anything else. So, sorry about that. Yeah, so it looks great, but we do need to decide as a board, that what dollar amount do we have to tell Steve? Okay, you gotta come back to the board, even if it's a safety issue.
One hundred and twenty-twelve.
And do we have, you know, do we have any feeling about where that should be? Because?
I, I think we should really review the entire, um, policy. Because Shay and I have some things we'd wanna talk about with, um, the responsibilities of, of Steve and other people in regards to the recreation center. And Ron suggested that we really look at the whole thing altogether. So I think we really need to move that to a committee.
So what if we do a weekly budget meeting and policy and try to get out within less than an hour? So we'll do a little bit on each item. Okay, so we'll, maybe Tuesdays at seven. We'll just see how all of our schedules work. But, so weekly budget meeting and a weekly work on the policy meeting until we either kill each other or fall asleep.
Can we bring tacos to that?
I asked you to not do it on the ICL Tuesday night.
Bad idea, yeah. But maybe it won't be Tuesday. We all need to check our schedules. But anyway, watch for that. There'll be a notice coming out. Um, Mary?
Um, has ownership of the stage been established that belongs to the SMRPD?
We gave it, we gave it over.
The ICL, uh-huh, the ICL. I just wanted to make sure that it was.
We gave that stage to SMRPD.
ICL gave it to?
No, it wasn't ICL's stage.
Whose was it to start with? I thought it was ICL's.
No.
With Darrell elected to the country fair committee.
Oh, okay. We, uh, for the first country fairs, what?
And they're still the other one.
There's still the other one. So that's the.
The same. They both have the same condition and everything, so they're both good. So the other one, if, if any, you know, if we need to use it anywhere, it's still movable and it's over at the church.
So ownership, it has, it, ownership has gone to the, to the SMRPD.
At the church on.
No, they borrow it.
And now we have someone who doesn't borrow it anymore.
They have a little trust set up, yeah.
Yeah, they have something else now.
Their stage, let's just let you know, it's probably twelve by twelve with trusses and stuff. Probably fifteen, twenty grand.
If it's immediate repair or you just fence it off and.
But I do, I do agree with the fact that we have a maximum on that.
This here?
That's why we really need to change the policy. And I think it is, it is wrong and I think we do realize it and that's why we're looking at a policy with Steve to maybe increase the amount of money for safety issues. So we, you know, that's something that I would like to look at.
Even when we had it swagged off and everything, people were climbing on it.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be an attractive nuisance. Anything that's put on our park land becomes an attractive nuisance of some kind. And it has, it has to be safe because people are not going to stay off it.
Well, that stage, once it's done, it's going to increase your property values.
Okay, so my concern about the stage is that, and Steve and I have talked about this, we want to put a railing around the back, you know, so people don't back up and fall off. But when it's just sitting there and it's an attractive nuisance, there's nothing on the front. Where you can't put something on the front of a stage, right? So how does that work and how does anybody know what makes that okay?
That's a question because anything over, I believe it's either thirty or thirty-six inches off the ground is supposed to have a railing forty inches high by code on a, on any kind of a deck on a house.
It's under thirty-six inches in the front. The back is over thirty-six inches. We don't need a, so we wouldn't need a railing in the front, but we will need one in the back of it for sure. Because we don't want the band guys fall off the back either, so.
Can't you tow it out when you're not using it, so it's not just left there?
No, we don't have any place to store it.
It's no storage.
You could tow it, but where would we get it?
Yeah.
None, I know.
See, that's, well, that's why Shay and I argued about where it sat and then off of the.
Yeah, we got it off the porch.
No, no, I remember.
Just so it didn't interfere with the basketball people.
Yeah.
Okay, so Derek.
Oh, it's a skateboard. I'll just make a comment, just, I don't know about the safety issue and everything. When Ella Fitzgerald was still alive, I saw her perform at the Hollywood Bowl. And she was singing, she wore thick glasses and it was at night, of course. And as she was singing, she walked and fell into the orchestra pit.
What?
And they hauled her backstage for about, almost an hour and they carried her back and sat her on a stool. And she sang, "I Fell For You." Sang one song and then that was it. So I mean, we're going to have that issue anywhere if the Hollywood Bowl's going to happen, you know, it's going to.
Hey, no, no ladies would please make plans about that.
Exactly, yeah. And no orchestra pit.
I want to put a state code that involves that.
Especially since the incident at Modern Day with the Rosary High School. Stages are probably becoming more in the limelight.
Well, the good thing about, well, that's something we should think about is, so one of you guys is just, how much weight can it handle? But since it's a giant trailer, it can probably handle as many people as it could put on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a question about the, the canopy. The canopy makes me nervous that the need to catch it and something, you know, tear it off and drop it down on people. So what are you guys thinking about that's affordable that's not going to do that?
Well, there's different options. We, Shay and I have been talking about it a little bit. You know, we could go with, and Mike and I were talking about it too, maybe EMT. And we could have sleeves in the ground, possibly, where we have like a, you know, a bigger pipe in the ground and then the EMT, the other pipe slips inside of that, maybe.
We talked about the square, the heavy-ditty square.
Right.
Inch or two inch squares.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking, like round maybe, because it'd be cheaper. And we could go with something like that, possibly. And with that thought in mind, you know, we might be able to take the, if we did it in two sections, you know, maybe take one of the sections out and then drop the whole thing down so it's all covering the stage so people aren't climbing on the stage then, you know, when we're not, when it's not in use. Just a thought. And, you know, I've, I've got a, I've got a carport. I've got a carport that I, I donated, you know, we could, maybe I was saying about incorporating that, but that thing's, it's, I mean, it might cost just as much to, you know, redo that thing, you know, the pipes and stuff on it, that, as it would to just get new EMT and do something different. The other thing is that we can use a mesh, maybe, you know, like a mesh over the top of it. So the wind doesn't blow through that, like a screen mesh. And the wind will blow through that, you know, and, and then if we, if it rains, we could have a tarp, you know, we store and we could put the tarp over the top of it.
The screen would be okay though outdoors.
This, this sale material, have you looked into the sale material?
You know, I, I did, Linda, but I was looking in the K's, our rec, our parks and rec catalogs and it's expensive as hell through there, you know, so I need to look somewhere else.
What about parachute, surplus parachute?
Well, if you look at a sale company, because I looked into it, there's a sale company.
Yeah.
Peter, Ollie and Peter Smith Brothers is a sale company and they could probably do it cheaper than if you went through those other companies.
The thing I'm worried about is the sale, is it, it's a sale. I don't think it catches wind, you know, and I, I'm afraid because what happened, you know, previously when the canopy was left on it and the tarp was left on it and it just, it literally picked up the trailer and moved the thing.
Look at.
Picked up that trailer?
Yeah.
There's.
It moved it off the, the stands and everything, it was like.
There's the sales at the park that's off, off of Portola on Ridge, Ridge Line?
Yeah, that, that's mesh.
Yeah, it's mesh, but it's, it's taunt and so that's not going to fly.
I got a, I got a suggestion. You might want to look at Steve over at the Bird Sanctuary or Amphitheater. They've got a canvas but it's on rings and they pull it.
I was just thinking the same thing.
I'll go check that out.
Yeah, go look at it.
Just go take it.
It's like, so you can just pull it out and then you can just collapse it.
There you go.
First of all, I think it probably would look really neat to have a canopy on it. But I just questioned the, the cost, the maintenance, the usage of it. I mean, whether it's sailcloth or whether it's mesh, I mean, it still has, it's still subject to the elements. If it's mesh, it may need to, need to be replaced every now and then. It can collect weeds and twigs and branches. I'm just saying that, I'm, I'm saying, why do we need this canopy? I mean, it'd be neat to have it, it'd look be good for a concert. But when you think about the long-term use of it and investment and risks and cost, do we need a permit to put something like that? I don't know. Those are questions I have. I'm not saying I'm against it. I just, I just don't know if it's, if all, it's all worthwhile.
Can we table it?
You know, it gets, it gets really hot, it gets really hot for the band members and stuff. I mean, you get direct sunlight, you've got to have shade there.
Materials last fifteen years in the sun.
What if we wanted a tree more and it grows faster than the rest of the canopy?
No, we always have a canopy for every event that we do on that stage except for.
No, because we need it or, do we always have it or we really need it?
Oh, we need, yeah, we need it to have a fair.
I have the tarp from last year.
And we also need this fake frame for the lights, for the music in the park at night. It holds the lights plus it holds the canopy. It's, it's a two-part system.
What's the cost? Okay, so we're, we're not ready to make a vote today, so you guys work out some more ideas. I mean, I like the idea of the ring one where you can pull it away and then it doesn't become a permanent sale. Or in the mat, a mesh maybe even on rings? I think what you're talking about in the front there, now we're, now we're back to a way bigger pipe, Steve, if they're going to hang lights on it.
Oh, we had a rickety thing before. The lights aren't that heavy.
Well, as Servite High School has shown us, we can't do rickety things.
But Dave Heber had that frame.
That thing was.
Is the motion we table this until we get more information?
Until we get more information.
You guys work on some bids and ideas and come up with something.
Yeah, just build something.
In the.
Trial and error constriction.
This is kind of off topic, but, you know, we're not that formal here anyway. I got to meet with Shane Silsbee, who's the new OC Public Works guy the other day. And he, one of his comments was interesting. He said, "We like to build stuff because that's what we do. We're engineers." He goes, "He goes, 'We don't like it when we come out to build stuff and half the people learn and think it's the crappiest idea they ever heard and the other people, half the people love it and want it because we don't like confrontation like that.'" So I told him we had to get over that because it wasn't going to happen. But, but, so what he was kind of saying is that if we come up with ideas, they'll come and build it. We just need to, we need to work out ourselves what the idea would be. So we're thinking like, when you guys worked on that Silverado Bridge out there, that Sunny Algo Bridge, we should be thinking ahead of time and coming up with a plan that at least most everybody likes. And then go and, they don't like to see us bickering back and forth even though that's how we do it. I, I keep using Linda's example that when we did the, maybe it wasn't your example. Anyway, when we did the Majeska Home back right after I moved here.
Yeah, I, it was, and I don't do that.
Yeah, the, the county said, "Oh my God, you know, we did this Majeska Home." And I think, that was twenty-five years ago. Like, "Oh, it was so horrible and everybody argued and complained." And I, I told them, I go, that, we went back to those people and said, "From the neighborhood perspective, that was the best interaction with the county we ever had." Because we worked and argued and must do all the things and they were just like mortified that we did this and still yelled and stuff. So we need to, we need to think about as we're going and asking them stuff to work it out, moving ourselves some. But think of what, what there could be out here and what we want them to build. Because he goes, "Yeah, we like to build stuff, that's what you want."
That reminded me that I, I need to get out more announcements, but the, the meeting for the Majeska Bridge is going to be happening on April the tenth at the fire station.
In Majeska?
In Majeska.
That's the bridge by the country square.
Yeah, well, it's by the Hun's house. Yeah. But if people have questions about the Silverado Bridges, they can come to that. A lot of the questions are going to be the same ones. But, but that was, people just brainstormed ideas and talked about what they wanted and what they didn't want and it, there was, there may have been a little bit of disagreement, but it was fine. They, those guys loved that meeting. They absolutely loved it.
Just whenever they're out here saying, "Oh God, this is so good. We're glad you came because we're getting all this feedback back and forth." So make sure they know that it was a great thing because they're like, "Oh my God, those people yelled and argued and..." Because nobody does that downtown. So whenever you give them, "God's on the back for doing that," we should. Next item, policy committee. So we're going to have weekly policy committee meetings until we go through the whole book. Number, well.
Thanks, Steve.
I, I would actually like to get asked that we maybe talk about this briefly, but really we table it because I just got the director meeting attendance one today and I haven't seen one in three yet. So if, since it's nine o'clock, would you guys mind if we, we need to get that sent to everybody? And we can work on it. And so we're going to table policy meeting for, policy item F for today, all the items. Majeska Park, we don't really have anything.
Do you mean sent to every, all the public because it went to the board?
I, I didn't get, I only got the meeting director one today.
Oh, you know what? Vaughn asked for those and he was supposed to give them to everybody. And we gave it to him a long time to get with your agenda.
Yeah, I didn't get it. So let's, we're, everything's good with getting that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Anybody, anything more about the children's advisory committee that we want to talk, children's center that we need to talk about?
I think that Shay and I have been just talking about having an advisory committee meeting. And we just need to pick that together and just evaluate who's going to be on it.
We need lots of new people to come and do it.
I think that our new brainstorming committee, a lot of people from that will now become advisory. It kind of is an advisory committee.
You just need to have the, the three different groups, fundraising, marketing, and programs. Start having meetings.
I think that's a good idea.
And we have almost weekly meetings with the fundraising already. Yeah, so the marketing and the programs just need to start having meetings.
Make sure Laurie's, maybe you should be doing there and make sure she's there that day.
Yeah, probably could be helpful if she were to actually facilitate calling the meetings.
Yeah.
But you need to do a broad announcement because it could be people who would like to attend and be part of those groups that couldn't make it that night for whatever reason and needed to leave early or whatever, so.
And then we could just, but we normally went over in the advisory meetings with financials. So we could just move that component to the meeting that we have, so we're going to help with the budget and financials. Okay, we could do that, that's a good idea.
When, when Linda and I met with Lori the other day and Kelly came because they were talking to us about summer programs and what they want to do, we went through budget items with them and they, they had kind of missed a few ways to cut the budget. So we reiterated what they were going to be to one teacher in the morning, one teacher in the afternoon. Lori covers the middle when the, one of them goes and drives, so that won't be Lori driving. And then the only other time we're going to have another body that we pay for on site is when we have too many preschool and after-school kids because there's some rules about how you do that. So that's, that's going to really help, that's really going to help cut our payroll down, which is our biggest expense.
And Lindy had already initiated that.
Lindy did that and it undid itself, so we, we saw her schedule and we're like, "No, no, no, fix this."
There's another reason for that too, and it's not just financial. And I know from being a school-aged teacher for twelve years, is if, if the children in the afternoon are mixed together with just one teacher, everything becomes preschool and the schoolagers don't like it. And then they start not wanting to come.
No, they're not.
Because they're in a preschool. And that was my biggest complaint as a teacher in the afternoon when the budget started to affect the, the classrooms combining. And if we could help that in any way, we'll save our school age program.
The, I thought I heard Lori say that it only was a problem if it was like when you had one preschool kid that was there after certain hours. And it may be that we have to stop the preschool program at a certain time because we can't afford an extra teacher at ten to fifteen bucks an hour for one kid for.
Right, right.
So that's something they're going to have to work out on their budget.
Right.
Or is it possible that if we, we really need every, we need people to start going and volunteering. So it's like the Silverado Elementary School used to be. All the moms and some of the dads went and volunteered and there were like three people, the teacher and two helpers, almost every day, every class, so. That's what you're going to hear from Lori too, is she wants to know what all of you can do. So Steve and Mike have been volunteered already. And they're going to, they're going to come and do. They're going to come and do heavy equipment operating for two-year-olds. And birdhouse making. And I already, my contractor up the street that helps me, the handyman, I said, "You're, you're going to be going down and doing something, teaching the kids how to saw and build stuff." He's like, "I am?" I go, "Yeah, you're volunteering too." He's like, "I am?"
Power tools 101.
Yeah.
I'll sign up for that.
So, so anyway, that's something to think about. Okay, any directors' comments?
None for me.
No.
Shay?
No, I just want to say that I'm, I'm excited about our new director and we're really having a good time working with her. And I, probably because we both come from school-aged children's backgrounds, so we understand each other. It's, it's really nice. I like Lindy too, but the, the relationship I have with Lori just seems a little deeper. It's kind of exciting, so.
So.
Yeah, okay.
Good. So I have a couple of things. We've got a note, a while ago, the board voted to go with this company called something Utility Management. And they've had our stuff for I don't know how long and I keep corresponding with the advisor person that they've assigned us and pretty much nothing's happened. And so I would like the board to make a vote, although I guess we can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda. So at the next weekly budget meeting, we're going to vote on discontinuing our contract with them.
Have you done anything?
Well, they've been out, they've been out trying to beat on Edison to get our rate lowered because they have us in this high rate tier and they haven't been able to get anything.
Well, they haven't gotten paid either, have they?
They only get paid on if they save us money.
Well, so why not just let them keep going?
Yeah.
It's not costing us anything.
There's reasons. So we'll be voting on that at our next special meeting, which will be next week.
What are they called?
It's Utility Cost Management. So that, you know, just so everybody think about it. Nothing's happened. I'm, I was thinking about calling them up and saying, "No, nothing's happened. We're going to discontinue our agreement with you." But I thought maybe it'd be good to have the board vote on it. But I could call them and say, "No, this isn't working. Thanks for your efforts, bye." Or should we, do you think we should do a vote first?
Well, is there a reason why they have to?
Well, they, they can't, they can't squeeze any money out of Edison. Edison doesn't, wants to charge us what they want to charge us. And they were hoping to find a way to lower our bill, which they've done with other agencies and saved them lots of money. But we have, they haven't found any way that Edison's grossly abused us enough to really even say, "Oh, you can't do that and look, you're charging them too much for this." Because we just don't have enough expenses.
Are they continuing to try or have they just given up?
I, I haven't heard a word from anybody, so I'm thinking it's time to say thank you for your work, roll.
Well, I, if you, I would suggest you give them one final thing, say, "Tell me what the bottom line is. Are you going to continue? Are you going to get something that you're not or are you just, you just, you know, dog paddling here?" I mean, give them the option to say, "Yeah, we can do something. We can't do something, no, we're done," whatever. And then, then I would give them that option.
Okay, well, I'll call them this week before our next meeting. I want, I want us to look at getting a request for a proposal because I assume it's going to be enough money, although Mike and Steve, you might know. If we're going to, if we repay the basketball court here in the parking lot, are we over fifteen thousand bucks?
Yeah, if you, if you're just going to, if you're going to grind it and do it the right way, it's going to be over fifteen.
It needs to be done the right way, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no sense in thinking it because it just keeps breaking out.
You'll hold water.
And Lori's not going to help us right now.
Is it?
You start getting too high, you hold the water, so you better have courage.
Do, did we kill off that tree that was causing the problem over there yet?
No, well, that's, that's something I was, I was asking Shay about, what's going on with that? Because we, is it approved for Peterson to go ahead and do that?
It's approved.
Oh, it is? We need to get with Steven.
Come and take it, take it. It's for all three of those trees to go bye-bye.
On the, on that end of that parking lot, there's three trees and the roots are going under the basketball court and doing so.
And pulling our fence apart.
The fence is coming apart, it's growing, the fence is growing.
We've got to go look at it. We should keep it. The tree has grown through the fence and now has the wrought iron rails surrounded by the tree.
And the fence doesn't close unless you put your weight on it and shove it shut.
The ice cream stand would appreciate it if we could get that bump out, right? Because that's where we put the, and it is dangerous right there. We try and put our, put our pop-up far enough forward so people don't trip on it. It is a trip hazard there.
So we need to go, you know, you guys give us ideas on who we can get that's the cheapest or the next time they're paving the, the street out here, say, "Okay, come over and give us a bid on doing this little job here."
Do you need, does that have to go off the bid? That's got to be a form that.
Yeah, we need to get three.
You need to get, you need to get an initial idea on what it's going to cost and that's going to bid. It's over fifteen thousand, it has to go to bid.
It has to go to closed bids.
Right around thirty, I'm going to guess, probably thirty.
Yeah, so we're going to do closed bids, but we want, we want to get all the people who.
Well, it'll have to go out, it'll have to go out and, it doesn't have to go in the newspaper or anything, Linda?
Yeah.
It's over fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
So Linda, could you like, would you like pull together the rough draft so we can get ready to do that? You say something?
Yes.
That was the good luck.
Excuse me, Greg?
Yes.
Can we also look at revisiting the Majeska Park regarding the sand and the rubber? Because we looked at that originally and I was told we didn't have money to do that in the Majeska Park for the, the kids' play area.
So number two on my item would be to make a plan for the Majeska Community Park and what kind of surface should we put under the play equipment there? Because it's, it's like the play equipment at the children's center, it's, it's sand, which is a legal thing. But we have to have Steve on a maintenance where he goes and rototills it every so often. And do we want to do that? Do we want to do chips? Do we want to do the rubbery surface that's out here?
The bummer.
And Capri is good with all three of those.
They are. The bummer is that wood chips are no fun and they're hot.
Yeah.
But they're soft.
They're total shade there.
They're softer and they're the safer one and then.
But what's the maintenance on wood chips? Because they have to get fluffed too because we got in trouble for the wood chips at the children's center.
Yeah, and, and the wood chips at the children's center were already old. They were older when we got them, they weren't brand new. So their shelf life was only half. The old ones were already old when we got them. We got them used for free from Rick Schultz for the whole yard. So they decompose really fast. The newer ones will last longer, but still, yeah.
So we should look at how much does, well, first, how much is taking the sand out? Because there's already sand. And if we just fluff the sand and make it work, what's that going to cost? And how much is it going to take Steve's tongue to fluff it? And how often should we be fluffing it? Because we know we should be fluffing it. We've admitted it publicly, we have to start that process.
Well, Capri has said a number of times that it's a safety issue. I mean, we thought, Capri said.
What's a safety issue?
The fact that the sand, even the way that we're fluffing it right now, it's still very hard.
We're not fluffing it, that's why it's hard.
But even when we were fluffing it, it goes back to being hard. I looked a lot at it when we were, when Steve was going over there and, plus that sand was old and we knew the cats were pooping in it and there was a lot of issues. That's why rubber was a better surface and that's what Capri suggested that we do.
The problem for me with that is when you look at that park, it's, it's a real pretty park and.
We're not going to be red, we're going to be green.
And the, and, and it's conducive to natural landscape. So rubber to me blended in with dirt that's going up into the hillside and through. I just can't picture it for some reason, but I don't know. Got to see some parks where they do that and it looks okay.
Visualist.
At my house, the thing I don't like about the park is that the patch at my house caught on fire during the fire. And so there, when I got there, there were places you could see where the firemen had raped the mulch away from the trees so the tree didn't catch on fire. And there were embers in my yard as big as my arm burned. And I'm like, "Who brought that?" And then I'm like, "Oh, nobody brought it." It flew in my yard from the hillside behind me, which is a long ways away.
Sand doesn't burn. But we could replace the sand with a softer, newer sand too.
Well, what, we need to look into rubber, initial cost, upkeep cost, chips. Does the chips, how do you fluff the chips? You just go in with the pitchfork and fluff them?
No, with the pitchfork.
Yeah, Steve's good fluffer.
Yeah.
We just call him Fluffy.
That was so bad, but so good.
She wants to take them out and he said, "Can't do that."
How long were you waiting for that?
Yeah, that was perfect.
Oh, the snakes don't like the wood chips.
So snakes don't like wood chips, so.
We used to get a lot more snakes at the children's center when we had sand. And we don't get snakes anymore. Snakes like the rubber stuff too. They don't like.
Yeah, they do actually, like the rubber stuff here, yeah. They love the rubber stuff.
Are they rubber sticks?
Yeah, yeah.
Steve and Shay, so you guys.
Choose your evils.
Yeah.
You guys pick the evils and let's talk about it in the next meeting.
So can we get a gopher nator?
Oh, yeah.
We need one bad out here.
We might be able to, we might be able to hire a gopher nator company to come and do it for us.
Well, we can just get one so we can take care of it ourselves.
I'm not sure if you'll do it, but I, I'll buy one and I'll come and do it for free.
All right.
The next one was the.
Yeah, that's what mistakes.
What we need to talk about, reworking the surface and the height of the material at the children's center backyard later. Because Lori told me the other night that, that the height is, it's too far from the drop-off of the slide to where they hit the dirt, which means we may have to raise those railroad ties around the edge to make the dirt higher. So we have to decide how high, which surface, so we need to do that at both parks.
All right.
Lori has an idea for the summer of, because there's an air, we, we wood chip the whole thing because we didn't have anything, we didn't know what else to do. And so some of those.
Which one's like, the front thing or the back?
No, the backyard. The backyard school-aged playground goes across and the playground is over here.
I thought it was sandy underneath.
There's still the old, some of the old sand underneath, but we dug most of it out, filled it in with wood chips. Those decomposed or blew away. If we gather all the wood chips from this area over here all around the playground structure and then add more, we can be compliant there. Lori wants to have a mud pit for the summer over here where the, the sand and dirt is anyway. So we might as well just get the wood chips out of there and get some more.
Can we put the mud pit near a tree that needs the water?
There, no. The only trees right now that need water are the sycamores along the side of the musical building in the backyard. Everything else is dying because there's no, there's no irrigation anymore. And that place was built to irrigate. So everything that required irrigation over the years has died since irrigation has gone on.
Hesitate to say this while the tape's running, but it looks like my recollection of when I went to Mexico.
It's terrible.
So we need to be thinking about putting stuff in it and redoing the irrigation system. Okay, so that's what I would like us to do. So Steve and Shay, could you guys like be thinking about that? I'd like to do requests for proposals and vote on that at next month's meeting.
All right.
But we need some numbers so we know where we're at.
All right.
You were talking about, oh, okay, compliance, yeah, because we're going to have a meeting next week.
Tell me what the legal, what, what we're, we're going to be.
So now we are going to go to the children's center.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Thank you for staying, everybody. Thank you very much.
Hey, guys. How you doing, brothers? Good to see you.